This conference will now be recorded.
What came in early this first off Thursday.
It's recorded.
Good morning, everybody. We are about to begin our meeting. Do we have any volunteers in the press?
Thank you, Lord, for this day and allow us to come and be here. We come with thankful and grateful hearts, Lord, what you do for us. You meet our every need. So we're grateful that you allow us to come here on this day and be at this table to do the work, to do the county. We just ask that you guide, lead, and direct our efforts, that they might be pleasing to you and that they would be for the benefit of the entire county. That everything we do will be mindful of those who serve, Lord. And we just ask that you go with us through the manner this day. Give us where we feel you, pushing Christ, and we'll pay all pains, pay your.
It's all standing. Gentlemen, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Something's missing too.
Why, we might have trouble, right? They already say got stand up on tape.
Is this, is this all we got? These are all them?
That's all them.
Thanks, sir. September thirtieth was the last one, was it?
I really need to take a second.
Man, you should put the water can out for you there.
We have before you a proposal agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Anything.
Yes, sir. Dave?
Yes, sir.
I'm good.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman. Most that we approve his agenda.
That's it. Okay, it has been motion accepted. All in favor by the show of hands in that motion here. Okay, our old minister or mail and email to everybody. What's the pleasure of the board?
Movement is adopted and recorded, Mr. Chairman.
That's it. It has been motion accepted. Do we have any discussion on it? Okay.
I'm John.
Oh, I thought you had a hand.
He was so nice. I was asking him to hold up just a second.
Okay. All right, all in favor by the show of hand. Okay, that motion there. Steve is on your next.
Okay. We'll have the October financial report at the next, at the next meeting. We're going to take a little extra time to review everything. This is the last, that was the last month of our fiscal year. And glad to report we got through without having to borrow any money from our reserve account. So everything went good there, and we are now starting our new fiscal year. So and hopefully I talked to Tax Commissioner Ola yesterday, and she has submitted the digest to the state for review. Hopefully we'll get a prompt approval of that, and then she can send it to the printer to have the profit bills, property tax bills printed and mailed out. So everything seems to be on schedule with that. Our number three, the bridge on Bowen Road, we're still waiting on a response from DOT. Initially, they requested a fifty thousand dollar commitment, financial commitment from the county to go toward that project. We've requested that they waive that commitment, and they're considering it, so we're waiting on a response on that, so. Our number four, the Georgia Department of Transportation is accepting applications for the 2026 L-MIC program. The county is eligible for eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. It requires a ten percent local match. Applications must be received by February the first of next year. And Public Works Director Rodney Hare and Engineer Lance Woods are preparing a list of potential projects for consideration by the county commissioners to be submitted to DOT for the L-MIC. Just to update you on the proposed ordinance regulating cryptocurrency mining facilities. The planning commission is scheduled to conduct a public hearing to receive public comments on October the thirteenth. And once they hear the comments, then they should vote to make a recommendation to the board of commissioners whether to recommend the ordinance be adopted or not. And then on October the sixteenth, which will be our normal second meeting of the month, county commissioners will conduct a public hearing to receive public comments on it. And then after that public hearing, the county commissioners could vote on the proposed ordinance. And just to give you an update, the company that purchased the old Roseburg Park Board Plant Site, they have requested that property be annexed into the city, so the city has started that process. And not the joke. It really matters, but. The company has actually delivered the eight units. But it's going to be initially phase one. They're just staged out there, and that's not where they're going to be put. They just had them, just had them delivered out there, and that's, right now, they have covers on the side. During transport, these covers will come off. But, all right, hold on a second.
That's your drawing board, sir?
Yes.
Good job.
This is the Roseburg Road out there. Highway forty-one's over here, Charlotte Road back over this way. That's the Georgia Power substation. My understanding, these are niche. Ultimately, these will be located somewhere right in here, close to that facility. But anyway, I just thought it was kind of neat.
Have we, have we went through the process of annexation like this over the years? How long does it take?
It's been so long since we went through the process. I think the process has changed, so.
The process has changed. In the past, the legislation of the past two, three years, I know exactly when they changed. Previously, the county did not have the right to interpose any objection. And it was just sort of a done thing. But with all the stuff that was going on in the metro Atlanta area about annexing in space and different municipalities trying to gain parts of counties and counties not wanting to give up services and all that, there is an opportunity for the county to interpose an objection. There's a process that it goes through if there's an objection opposed. But they have to present it to us within so many days of receiving the annexation request, which hasn't happened if they submitted that request. So they may not be aware of that, but they can fall prey to that. Because it's a procedural thing. It's not something we control and can waive. And so if they don't do it, they've got to start over.
I know it probably normally travels the route of the parcel. But out here, it's kind of a weird situation, as Stephen pointed out to me, you know. And I pointed out to some of the city folks, they weren't even aware of it. But part of this site is across the road. Can you show them that triangle over there still? And bring it up, to bring this to the table. You know, that's going to have to be included. And it lies to the east, east of the road.
Well, depending on how it goes down the road, I'll give you an example. The city annexed in the McDonald's property with what they call a shoestring annexation, which means the city limits goes down the bridge. Okay, you can no longer do that. That's unconstitutional. So if it doesn't line up straightly across, and they've got to go down the road any to get to it, then they can't do it.
Well, I was just saying, thinking about the future. See that triangle right there? Why not, why not then annex and take that whole entrance road right there? And then, and then Rodney and them don't have this dumping area and that curve from the railroad track all the way down. That's a long way from us. The city's already working Seventh Street with their mowing, coming up to that point. They could keep that clean with as much attention as they give their stuff.
Right.
And it's right here in their yard, so it just looked like it'd be a win-win. I don't see where it hurt us.
I don't think it would either, and that's where this process.
Just go to the other ditch, man.
That's where this process allows us to tell them, no, or here's our suggestion. You know what I mean? And we would not oppose it if you did include this, and these are the reasons why.
Rodney, before I say, that's the problem there. And, and you know, and they do a good job mowing and keeping their stuff. You go down Seventh Street. I mean, they mow and keep it, keep it clean and try to keep the trash picked up, and it would just extend it coming right on out.
My only thought is the noise from this is going to affect people in the county. So are they going to hold to their ordinance? Or how, I mean, how would we ever? What, what power do we have of them affecting citizens in the county? If they don't hold to their? That's my only deterrent of not fighting that, because we won't be able, if they give them a waiver to do whatever, how do we get, how do we ever get to go back and stop that?
Well, if they, if they do it right now on the part that's in the city.
We have not.
Right.
We know what.
And noise travels, so, you know, and there's a field right there. It's going to absorb some of it. So I can't, all I can say is if, they could probably do what they're going to do, whether they get this annexation or not. But then as far as adhering to their ordinance, they have to have an ordinance to govern this, and then they have to apply, you know, if someone's violating it, the person is who has standing to address it. And I don't know if the county at that point would have standing, but the citizens would have, the citizens of the county would have standing to address it with the landowner and ultimately the city through a civil lawsuit or nuisance. Because here's the thing, right now, there's no noise. Okay, and if someone built when there's no noise, and now the noise affects their enjoyment of their place, then a nuisance has been created, and then they can sue for nuisance, and they could shut the nuisance down through an injunction theoretically.
Because from our research, the city's ordinance will not allow any type, anything like this to sit there. Theirs is more restrictive than what our, what we've looked at to the point of you can't, you wouldn't be able to have this on that site if their current ordinance stays in place.
There's an election going on in the city. Who knows? I mean, what I'm saying is, and I'm not saying that anybody in that race has one way or the other. I'm just saying that the political winds can change.
You said they have to give us notice. Did Pinehurst give notice when they annexed?
When did they annex?
They annexed a piece of.
Yes, they gave us a notice.
With annexing Horn Road.
Out by our bill.
Where Mark built the house?
Yeah, they gave us a notice on that. I remember that.
They had to give you a notice under the old law. But now the notice is tightened up, and you, and in the old time, they just had to notice it so you could take it off your tax digest. Now, since the law has changed, you have to be.
Take it off.
Not take it off, I mean, take the, not take it off, the other way around. I'm thinking from the city's perspective where they can.
If they're adding.
Right. The bottom line is, the notices now require, used to it was just, hey, we're doing this. Now it's, we're doing this, and you can object. That's the difference.
When is the hearings on this?
The only notice, you know, Michael Bowlen shared a copy of the request from the owner that the property be annexed into the city, but that's not.
That's not noticed. There's a specific notice that the city attorney or the city manager or the mayor, someone on behalf of the city with authority must give to this governing board.
Okay, let's see here. Mr. Wright?
Yes, sir.
I'm Steve Sanders. Come on up and have a seat. This is Byron Wright. He's with Kim Pro Services. And one of the things, one of the things his company does is roadside spraying. So I'd invite him to come and give a present. Yeah, I'll pass.
Yes, run things, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning. How y'all doing?
All right, your floor is yours.
Steve called me about a month ago, said y'all had been looking into some roadside spraying. I put that together for y'all.
Rodney, come on up. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Our public works director, Rodney Hare. He introduced you and invited him to come on up.
Hey, man, hey, man. I kind of just put that together for y'all to read through, but I can go through and explain it. We do selective growth treatment, growth treatment and growth regulator on your roadside turf programs. I'm not sure how many times y'all have a mowing cycle in a year. But we come in from like November to March, and we would treat the roadside turf areas that y'all are mowing. And that's a pre-emergent. It takes care of your winter weeds. It keeps a lot of stuff from coming up, and it kind of pushes your turf not green up. You won't have all those weeds coming up in the winter months that you're having to mow, you understand? That'll push your mowing cycles back a little bit further into spring. It'll save you a month. And then we come back, depending on when we do the first treatment, April, September. And we do another growth regulation treatment, which takes out the weeds. It takes out that Johnson grass. It takes about two years to totally eradicate the Johnson grass. It's kind of tough because of the root system on it. But that treatment will push, it'll cut your mowing cycles down tremendously. It takes, it takes two years for you to get some of that Johnson grass and stuff out. So, but you'll see a huge difference in it. Not only does it save your mowing cycles, but you get a lot better looking turf on the roadside. You don't have the weeds in it, the clover, the dandelions, and you're mowing those as much as you're mowing the turf, you know? So aesthetically, it gives it a much, much better look. How many times y'all mowing your right of ways?
Well, it's on a normal, I mean, three, three times what I've seen, you know, like last year, I think. We did four rounds, and have done five in certain areas.
Right, right, right.
Talking about the.
Just for an example, it's something that's kind of close to y'all, Tooms County. We had a little late start with that storm that came through, because they got, they got hammered up here with stuff. So it took us a little bit longer, but he does three mowing cycles a year, and we took out his last mowing cycle. And like that wasn't, timing wise, that wasn't the best scenario, because of all the weather they had. They were clearing trees for months and months and months, you know, because of that hurricane. But it's, it works really good. It's a cost-saving money, especially if you're doing it, you know, four, forty-five times a year. We cut probably two, two out of that, you know, at least, if not more than that.
I know you mentioned Johnson grass. Does it, have you got any thing effective for kudzu?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. We got.
A little field.
Yeah, usually we do kudzu a little different. I mean, what we, what we, what we use on, on the roadside part, we'd want to come back with another chemical, a new spot treat, kudzu.
Right.
You know, we just did that for the city conyers down Old Covington Road. And a lot of that, depending on where it's growing at, we'll do a lot of that by hand so we can shoot, put further back into the tree line and keep it from encroaching on the roadside.
I know when you're past, I mean, it'd take up to three sprays.
Yeah.
Because I don't know if y'all got something more.
We, we have something that works a little bit better, man. And we've got a chemical that like we can spray across the, a lot of times you've got the brush, it's going over the top of the trees.
Oh, yeah.
We can spray across the top of the trees without killing the trees and give a kudzu. And kudzu's a process. It's invasive, you know. It takes a couple of times. But usually we don't spray it maybe two times a year. And once you do that over a period of a few years, you kind of train it to go in another direction. You know, it doesn't want to get sprayed every year. It'll just start growing back up into the tree line. Kudzu's, you can eradicate it, but the problem is it's usually on somebody else's property. You can't go in there and pay to treat three acres on somebody's property. But we do a lot, we do a lot of kudzu work for counties and municipalities.
We got a few hot spots with kudzu, and I don't know the type, but it is not the bamboo type reeds, but it's reeds.
Yeah.
They grow real tall.
We spray those, yes, sir. And that's, those are more side visits, like going around and just roadside type, because it's different mixes for all, it's, we do that stuff by hand.
I discovered that. They, I mean, the roots on them things, you don't want to use any dirt.
No, because it'll come right, it'll come right back.
And I put a game in specific areas that you had them out, reeds.
Yes.
Well, we had a big dirt pile down on West Road, our site down there, and our pit, it was full of them. And I was asking some of the guys before me, the older heads, I said, would y'all using this dirt here with these five?
Yeah, I sprayed it problem around. I've seen, yeah, I've seen that too. With, with the bamboo and the reeds, if we can get them where they're not underneath hardwoods.
Right.
You know, there's a chemical that will just, it'll annihilate them. But if you can't put, you can put underneath pine trees, but you can't put underneath hardwoods if you're getting root up tape. So if they're underneath hardwoods, it just takes two to three treatments to get them, you know, under control and beat them back.
Mr. Wright, is this the same type stuff when you're talking about the roadside spraying that the DOT uses on State Highway?
Yes, sir.
And they've been using it for how many years?
Yeah.
Thirty years?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We do, we do, we do some DOT work in Mississippi, in Alabama. We don't do much in Georgia. It's a little bit different game up here with their stuff, you know. But we do that for a lot of other states, and it's the same exact stuff that they use. So I'm sure y'all seen it. It definitely.
Herbicide spraying.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'll ask a question. How does it affect the environment?
Everything's approved by the EPA. It's extremely safe. There's nothing that we can put on that right of way that a deer can't walk up and eat in thirty minutes and harm it, you know what I mean? So it's, it's really, it's extremely safe. And like he said, it's been around for, you know, twenty-five or thirty years. So, you know, y'all, Georgia, y'all are the first state that started doing power line right of ways. And so we've been spraying y'all's power line away. I've been, I've been doing this business for thirty years. And I started out spraying, but y'all are the first state that started the actual electrical right of way programs. And not to change the subject, but before I forget, I let you another page in there. It's on chemical side trimming. So y'all use that sidearm cutter. The maintenance on it's extremely high. We can come in, it's done by the acre. Just kind of look at those numbers. It's, we do that by the acre of footage, and it's all calibrated with our truck and a computer. And it'll say if you did one solid mile, it's six hundred and twenty-five dollars. You're not going to find one solid mile of the road. You don't have a yard, a business, a crop field. So you're running around, you know, that three hundred dollar a mile mark. And on your roadside, I've got in there for ninety-seven dollars, that's both sides of the road for a mile. You mean, just a straight mile. On the side trimming, it's just all figured by the acres on how much we do. And like I said, most of, you're not going to already find a road around it. You're going to do a solid mile all the time. I mean, it's going to be hit and miss and pick and jaws and like crops.
I was going to ask you about that because we have a good bit of, you know, the homeowners keeping up our.
Yeah, we skip over that.
You skip that.
Yeah, yes, sir.
But does your, your truck allow for that? Are you going a solid mile?
No, it's all hand controlled, but the computer keep tracks what we're doing in mileage wise, you know what I'm saying? So when he flips that switch.
We'll skip them.
Yeah, yes, sir. Even on the turf program, if somebody's maintaining it, we'll leave a buffer. You know, we'll leave a little bit of buffer. That way there's no, there's, there's no way to say we had overspray. Does that make any sense? So I might leave a thirty, forty foot buffer between yards. But just so that you spread it out to the yard, you know, people, people get upset sometimes, you know?
What about long agricultural fields where there's a crop growing out there?
We skip all that. I mean, it depend on, are you talking where it's got turf between the?
Yeah, there's some turf between the pay road and, there's crop across the ditch over there.
Yeah, we could treat that by hand possibly, or hit it at a different time of the year, depending on what they have in the fields. But some of those areas are just like, kind of, we come to them and make a decision, you know? But we're not going to spray anything that's going to damage anybody's crops, you know?
Will this stuff damage crops?
If you, yeah, it'll burn them up, like it'll burn. But we usually skip those areas. If there's a small area, we can spray it by hand. It wouldn't be, you wouldn't have any other spray or any trip or anything.
Because the majority of our roads is crops. They plant the right of way too.
How many?
Top of the right of way.
Yeah, how many miles do y'all maintain?
Oh, it needs like three hundred and thirty roughly paved.
Somewhere around there.
In that area. And the majority of them are all crops planted right up to the, when I say top of the right of way, we're live old.
I can come back down at another time, and then you can take a ride and take a look at some stuff. I can give you a better evaluation on what you're talking about and how that would handle it if you take me out, kind of show me, show me around or something.
What other counties do y'all do work in?
We do a lot of work for Tooms County, Lamar, Spalding County. We do some right of way spraying for Bid County and Macon. I can get you a list together if you need me to, some references. I can put all that stuff together for you.
Okay.
What kind of applicator are you using? Like you say, it'll damage the crops, and yeah, you're not going to spray on a gusty windy day. But is it something that hovers over and sprays directly?
It's, it's, we use a big truck with a thousand gallon tank on it. It's got spray equipment on it and the nozzles. And we get a, we can adjust those nozzles accordingly, change out the different heads on them, you know, for different, different things.
Now, that's for, that's the brush style truck, isn't it? That's for the trimming the tree. That's the tree trimming.
From the left there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, sir. And that's the same truck. That's just a whole different nozzle head, a different setup we have on that right there. And that's the side trimming that I was telling you about. We go to eight to ten feet of that, and there are a couple of different ways to do that. A lot of people like to do that in the fall, so you don't have a bunch of brown out, you know? But if you go in and you side trim something like this winter, what you like, maybe you want everything to kind of harden off a little bit, to get it when those limbs start to bloom back out, and you can shut that growth down. Because once you take care, once you eliminate that limb, it takes, it's way different than you cutting it and it growing back, you know?
I was going to ask you. I mean, you got to have a leaf to absorb the chemical, right?
Right, yeah, yeah. We need a little, we need a little bit, like, we'd come like late, late July, August, but you wouldn't have a five foot limb out there. You'd have a three foot limb.
Right.
When you hit it, the tree is not just going to grow that limb back as quick. We can get about three years out of that.
And this is, I guess this is some of the same chemical. Excuse me, I've seen EM. Excuse me, I've seen EMS use, it just kills the portion you hit.
Yes, sir.
It don't kill the tree.
It doesn't, it doesn't hurt the tree at all, you know, it just takes care of that limb. And the advantage of that is, like I said, when you cut it, it grows back tremendously. But when you spray it, that limb does die, but it doesn't hurt the tree. And it takes that tree a lot longer to regenerate that one limb than it did if you cut it.
I know, first time I saw it, well, they kill them, but I mean, you know.
Yeah, it just, it just cuts the line, I mean, it cuts the line.
Where you hit it, it's gone.
Right, yeah.
All right, if we wanted to proceed, trying to get in on this November to March?
Yes, sir.
When would we have to make that decision?
Uh, I would just need it maybe like uh, you know, uh, October or something like that. And uh, yeah, I could, I could meet with you and we could take a ride and look at some of this stuff if, if that's okay. And uh, I could write a program up for y'all. And uh, y'all kind of decide like um, a lot of times uh, just say y'all said y'all had three hundred miles. Uh, we could do that like one fifty and one fifty, like do one part of it one year, do the next part the next year. Or we could divide it into threes and do, you know, a hundred miles over three years and you're back on your rotation.
Would y'all like him at least go to the next step and ride, come down and ride?
Yeah, yeah.
Make him a proposal.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Let's do it. And, you know, give us a list of references also that we could contact.
That won't be a problem.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Y'all have any more questions? Uh, Rodney, can I, if you'll just give me a call or send me his information?
I'll, I'll email you his information.
I'll give you a call and we'll set some up in the next few weeks, three weeks, something like that. And come down, let us know you get the truck and go take a look at everything.
That'll be fine, very well.
Well, actually Rodney, you got his business card right there, you just get it, you just contact him.
All y'all, so if you know, if you've got any questions, don't hesitate. I very, very much appreciate y'all's time.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much, okay? Have a good night with four, getting up with you, okay? Thank you, sir, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just, I just emailed him up.
Yeah. He mentioned they do DOT contract work. This is a wild hair, but I wonder is there, is there a way through DOT that we could contract with them or off of their contract? We can at least find out who, who they do contract with and. You know, like you buy cars off a state contract or whatever. I wonder if DOT would oblige us and, and while they're spraying their roads, throw ours into the. Just asking, I'll ask a few questions.
What I heard him say about DOT is they did it in Mississippi and somewhere else. But I also heard there was a limited amount that he might do for Georgia D O T, but not for.
His company doesn't do a whole lot for the Georgia DOT.
But I do think that they farm some of that out.
I think they farm all of it out, do.
Our experience with DOT out here on this other state out here, it stands on its own merits. Now, if you, if you think they taking care of business out there, I'm missing something. This is the first year they've hit it in I don't know how many years.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's pulled the fences down, it's so bad.
Right, you brought that up a year or two ago and about, about when you cross into certain county lines and district, districts. And I've started watching that.
Yeah, Tiff County cleans the woods.
Yeah.
I, I, everything worked out of Tiffin, I'm trying to say. Tiffin DOT, some of us, we have a Thomaston DOT with a.
We're the most southern county in that district.
Friends, you might say, friends of no, no help.
Well, even our local DOT is limited with what they do.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm Curtis Webb, which is over the office here. He and I work hand in hand, I, I oblige him, he obliges me. And I mean, I was asking him the other day, I said, I said, you know what they got parked at the office? A dump truck was sent a salt spreader on. And an old Ford, fourth island tractor probably seven and a mile with a bulldog when they quit going, sitting there. I said, where's y'all backhoe and all that? He said, it's in the shop. I said, they don't, they won't get y'all a backhoe in? He said, he said, they won't buy that. So, you know, the last, the last two times that there's a tree fell on Highway ninety just passed Floss Eye headed to Lily. They, there was a wreck involved and two of them. Oh, I took backhoe one of our most trees quick, right? I mean, but you know, we work hand in hand, it's got to be done.
Thank you, sir.
You got anything else?
No.
All right.
Thank you. All right, on item number six, we have the deadline for resumes for the next county commissioner, what county administrator was two days ago. So you've got a notebook there, there were forty-three resumes submitted. Very first page, you got the list of all of them named alphabetically. Then there's just a blank sheet of paper in there in case y'all want to make some notes as y'all go through, review them. I suggest you go through, review them. My suggestion initially is leave them alphabetically in the notebook. As you go through, if you see one, that's a possibility, if you could come back to that page, that list there and just circle the number of the ones you think that are a possibility. And with, that way we'll, we can sort of divide them into possible and not possible, not a possibility at this time. Now, y'all said y'all wanted to like to have the D administrator onboard by January one. It's October now, so we need to keep this process moving. My suggestion, and not wait two weeks before we meet again to talk about this. I would suggest y'all, it's up to y'all, but I'd recommend we have a meeting next week. Will that be enough time for y'all to review the document? I mean, first that way, would that be enough time for y'all to review and, and come back? Or do y'all want to wait till for two weeks for our next meeting?
What day next week is my only?
What's today?
Depends on what day next week y'all choose.
I'm good. Next week, yeah, this, this needs our full attention right here.
Do you want them to give you their, their circles without any ranking or not?
Yeah, no, no, no ranking, not initially.
No ranking, but just like if, like for instance, if everybody picked.
Well, my, what I do is everybody circle your poss, your, your potentials. Then I'll come up, I'll combine that into, to a list of all the potentials.
Okay.
Then we can start trying to rank everybody's potential. So just cause you may have a potential and he not have it, that shouldn't eliminate yours as a potential.
Right.
You know, and then we might could vote how many, anyway, we. But when do y'all want to, all right, the question is, when do y'all want to meet again to discuss this? Time time next week or a week till two weeks from now for our regular meeting?
I just said we need to go and get started. What day next week are you thinking?
What, what days you free on?
Uh, Wednesday and Thursday.
Which one?
Either one.
I don't know. We need to get you out, I mean. We need to get you out.
I can't think of a year, but yeah, either, either, either day.
I can't do Monday and Tuesday, but.
Either day.
That'd be too quick. Yeah, I can do either Wednesday or Thursday.
I mean, y'all don't need a little time to go through, that's four to three, I'm in there, you know what I mean? What time, Thursday?
Three to ten.
Free me up, but it.
I don't know how long it's on. Nine o'clock next Thursday, okay? That'll work for me. Okay, number six. It's October the ninth. At night. Okay, we'll move right along. Uh, item seven, the Newland County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is a plan that all, all counties and cities are, are, if you to be eligible for assistance through GMA and FEMA during, when there's disasters, each jurisdiction should have a hazard mitigation plan. And used to each end, entity would develop their own plan. So Dooley County would have a plan, Bonham would have a plan, Unadilla would have a plan, Barbeau, whatever. Several years ago, the state recommended, hey, the county and all the cities in, in, in that county go together and have what they call a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. So with one document meets the needs for the county and all six cities. Basically, in this hazard mitigation plan, you try to go through and as best you can, identify all the potential hazards that could potentially happen. Weather, weather-related hazards, traffic-related hazards on I seventy-five, terrain, we got, we're blessed with two major terror roads. And, and then try to identify how you would plan to respond to those potential hazards. So, and the plan's usually a good like ten years. You have to do a midterm update. Now, we, we're at the end of a ten-year cycle, so we got to do a major update to the plan. We have been fortunate enough, the governor has announced that we are eligible for a grant from GMA, a twenty-nine thousand dollar grant to assist the county with updating this mitigation plan. And if y'all vote to accept the grant funds, then River Valley Regional Commission will assist us with up, assist the county and the cities with updating the plan. Now, the, the, the grant does require some match. But in the past, the county has been able to. Updating the plan requires several public meetings. And you try to get a lot of input from, from the county commissioners, from department heads. And ever, when we attend these meetings, our time, they assign a dollar value to the hours that we put in. So, so we can get credit for a lot of our match by time we spent reviewing the planning and the updates. So, we either got, we either, I recommend we accept the grant money because otherwise we're going to have to pay the whole cost. We don't, we want to remain eligible for assistance from GMA and FEMA in case of a disaster.
We need a motion.
I would request a motion that the county approve, accept this grant offer.
Make a motion to accept the grant from GMA to assist with the hazard mitigation plan.
That's it.
Is the motion in second. Do we have any discussion on it before we vote on it? Any other discussion? If not, all in favor by the show of hand, okay, that motion carried. I didn't get the chairman's signature on several pages here. Not as many as last.
You got P?
No.
There you go. You got one.
Yeah. I hate to say it, let me.
That one right there, right there.
There, please, sir. Thank you, sir. Hey, the next item, okay, we just took care of the roadside spraying. All right, the next planning commission meeting is scheduled for five-thirty on Monday, October the thirteenth. And they'll be considering a zoning request from Mark Cootie for a variance of zoning on parcel eighty-seven fourteen C. Currently zoned agricultural, the purpose of the variance is to allow a reduced setback from the front yard setback from ninety feet from the center of the road to fifty feet from the center of the road. Uh, he wants to build an addition onto the side of the building. Look.
That's not, is that his mama's house?
I don't know, sixteen fifteen Old State Road.
One house was for sale out there, yeah. I can look later, I just, I was.
Turn the lights now, so.
I thought he was on Cootie, I thought his mama's house was on Cootie Dairy Road.
Yeah.
It's probably where his uh. The shop?
The dairy, the dairy had a building there. Kind of an office type building across there, but it would be on. I guess it would front Old State, because Old State turns.
Right, okay, cool.
It's kind of split the dairy.
Right.
That is it. I don't know exactly where it's at, to be truthful.
As far as you turn.
Build north, build north, other way. Other north, six fifteen. Okay. The house is across the street there. Eight building.
Yeah. Okay. All right, back to the. And then request number two. Edwards Bennett Senior submitted application for rezoning of parcel fifty-one dash six L. It's currently zoned R one, single-family residential to R two, multifamily residential. Purpose is to allow a mobile home on the property for residents. And this is on Floss Eye Trail Road. And then the other item is they're going to have the public hearing on the proposed cryptocurrency ordinance, so.
Where are they on the zoning ordinances?
They are, they, Glenn had a meeting with two representatives from River Valley Regional. We had gotten a grant, we had gotten approved for a federal grant to assist. And those grant funds went away. So now we're back to, River Valley has met with Glenn. They're currently reviewing our current ordinance. And they are going to meet, representative of River Valley are going to meet with the planning commission on the thirteenth to discuss what, what changes the planning commission would like to have in the ordinance. And then they're going to come back with a proposal of what they can do to try to help update the ordinance. Item number ten, ACCG has sent out a cup, published a copy of their proposed twenty-twenty-six policy priorities. And I think this, we see, I sent this out with the agenda. Some of the, some of their proposed policy priorities for next year is long-term transportation, funding mechanisms, electric franchise fees, waiver of sovereign, something to do with waiver of sovereign immunity, special election cost reimbursements, EMS insurance, and then EMS increased Medicaid reimbursement costs, restrictions on the use of speed detection cameras in school zones, implementation of the next generation nine-one-one system, tax exemptions for fire services, estimated rollback rate and annual audit compliance. And then they provide a little more detail only for those items. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to try to, I think this all got sent out with the agenda package to y'all earlier. Number eleven, just a matter of information. Uh, Lieutenant Governor Bert Jones is statewide. Field representative will be hosting mobile office hours at the courthouse tomorrow from ten to twelve. One of, one of his representatives, TJ Hudson, will be there from ten to twelve tomorrow to meet with any local citizens and have any issues. They like assistance from the lieutenant governor for.
Not about politics, but metals up in Unadilla home, the JP Travel Center.
The JP Travel Center frames up.
Good, good.
Awesome.
Still, last guy I talked to said they talking about having it running by the end of the year.
We need them pumping.
There were penny counts.
We need to have a personnel, I mean, an executive session at the end of the meeting. And then just for information, I don't expect any actions today, but we got some terms on different boards that are expiring December thirty-first, so just to make y'all aware. On the Board of Assessors, District Four Representative Lloyd Borden's term expires, current term expires. And on District Five, Gene Roney's term expires on the Board of Assessors. On the Board of Elections and Registration, District One Representative Willenford, District Three Representative Lane Wilkin, and District Four Representative Earl Clark Junior's term expires December thirty-first. On the Planning Commission, Henry Blue, Sylvester Granville, and Mac Jordan's term expires December thirty-first. On the Recreation Board, Michael Daniel Senior's term expires. Uh, on the Middle Georgia Regional Solid Waste Authority, uh, Tony Lester and Steve Sanders' term actually is already expired, so they need to be, they need to be updated or replaced.
Motion.
We'll wait for the.
Chairman, there was a motion to.
We'll put you on another board.
It's a solid waste.
It ain't no good unless it comes to me.
It's a solid waste.
On the Middle Georgia Regional Solid Waste Management Authority, uh, currently, and just remind everybody, this, this is a, a three-county authority. Dooley County, Macon County, and Peach County are the three county members. And Dooley County has two representatives, Peach County has two representatives. Macon County, since they're, they're host county for the facility, they have three representatives. And our Dooley County's representatives have been Tony Lester and myself. And our term actually expired August the thirtieth, so.
If appointed, would you serve in retirement?
No.
Your successor in office could take your place.
That'll be up to the, the county commissioners at that time.
Yeah, you got tone on there, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't mind. We don't meet now, but once it blew moon.
Yeah, yeah.
We turn it over to the company.
I make a motion. We're motioning?
We make a motion for what?
Let them keep doing it.
Theirs expired, didn't it?
Yeah, I'm turning it as action.
Okay, okay.
I'm making a. We either need to be replaced or reappointed. We'll make a motion to reappoint.
Yeah.
Mr. Tony Lester and County Administrator Steve Sanders, who's the Middle Georgia Regional Solid Waste. Second motion.
Okay, yeah, the motion in second. I know we ain't got no discussion on it. Oh, they favor by the show of hand. Okay, that motion carries.
I mean, just for the heck of it, let me just, I don't remember what terms we serve. Let me go look right quick. Middle Georgia Regional Solid Waste Management Authority, four-year terms. Okay, back to the agenda. Mr. Chairman, that's all the items I have except for Reeve.
Okay, I'm just.
Executive session. We need to get any action on the middle, but I'm just informing y'all, terms expiring. We'll address that later.
Teach to retirement. That user proclamation that we go through every year. They, uh, coming to the, to the next meeting.
Okay.
Retired education, Dooley Retired Education Association.
Yeah. Yeah, so. Might just say to get a proclamation for.
I'd like to request we go into executive session for personnel matter and change of litigation.
That's it. Okay, they have the motion in second. Oh, they favor by the show of hand. That motion carries.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay.
Alright, one more time.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of executive session as read in executive session.
That's it.
Here's the motion in the second. Oh, in favor by the show of hand. Alright.
I got one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Out of these forty-three, we picking out our top ten or five.
That was the question I was gonna ask the customer. Spoil everybody to all of them.
Yeah, I seriously doubt you're gonna do all of them.
I don't think you're gonna find ten.
If you do all of them, I'm gonna question how seriously you looked at them.
Yeah, we got it.
Well, I'm saying, you might have a different set and I might have a different.
I say, let's, let's get, let's do that first and then we'll figure out the next step, is what I suggest.
At least ten or five.
Not just who, whoever you think.
Find a top team.
Whoever you think are possible. I think what you go to, you go.
Right, right.
You're probably gonna be between five and ten.
Five and ten.
In my experience, without looking at any of these, when you come into any of these, when you get a pile of resumes in a position like this, you're gonna get that.
Right. I think ten is gonna be stretching.
But, but, you know, that's only just happened, so it might be someone you might. The long head, two of them from over there. He said he called for a call. They want a month.
They really leave already.
They made it leave already. That don't send some of them.
I do between five and ten on season. Alright, so, where we'll be adjourning.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I'll, we have, I'm making a motion.
Nobody wanna go along with you, man.
I said.
I said.
Okay.